Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, Rob.
This is Sean Pien from Chuba Hilton.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Dan.
Hello.
Hey, John. Sarah, I show six o'clock. Do we want to get started in the interest of time with all the cases we have and the fact that we ran over last time and the Mayor and Planning Commission were delayed?
That's probably a good idea.
Looks like we have quorum. All right. Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for the Sharonville Board of Zoning Appeals. I guess Sarah or John, if you could make note of those in attendance from the participant list, that would be welcome. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance. And for those of you who are speaking this evening or testifying this evening, it is implied that you swear that the testimony that you're going to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth. This time, Mr. Creech, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mr. Eisen?
Here.
Dragon Burger? Mr. Sasser?
Here.
Mr. Pernick?
Here.
And Mr. Goldie?
Here.
Thank you.
Could you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
All right, great.
So if you're in the audience this evening, you're here because you're requesting relief from the rules and regulations of the zoning code for the city of Sharonville. These rules and regulations are put in place to fairly regulate the development of land within the city. When there's a need by the property owner to deviate from these rules and regulations, the variance process before the Board of Zoning Appeals is utilized. But when your case is called, state your name and address for the record, because we are recording these proceedings and explain why you're requesting a variance this evening. Financial hardships as stated in the application are not a valid reason for requesting a variance. Each case is heard on its own merit, and the board member should be familiar with your case, as he should have made a visit to your property prior to tonight's meeting. Once you have presented your case, we'll ask for questions. You'll then have a chance to respond to those questions. The board will then discuss your case. And in order for the variance to be granted this evening, you'll need a simple majority of the voting members. So I believe that is four affirmative votes this evening. Also with the Board of Zoning Appeals this evening, but are not a voting member, is Councilman Rob Tankersley. On behalf of the city to provide additional insights where applicable, is Mr. John Creech, Community Development Director, Ms. Sarah Dirks, City Planner. Gina Good, recording the proceedings this evening, and I believe Code Enforcement Officer Donna Hollingsworth is on the call as well. So with that, Sarah or John, would you please call our first case?
And I will say Donna Hollingsworth was planning on attending the meeting, but she is no longer going to be in attendance today.
Okay, thank you.
So the first item on the agenda was submitted by Adam and Valerie Goller of 11081 about Zarring Court in Sharonville, Ohio, in the R1B zoning district. Adam and Valerie are requesting a variance from the Sharonville zoning ordinance 1125.10 to replace an existing four-point or an existing fence which is installed 4.5 feet into the front yard of their house in the R1B zoning district. The property is on a corner lot, so they have two front yards, according to the zoning code. The fence is existing. It was installed between 2006 and 2010 by a previous owner. There was no record of a variance obtained for the 4.5 front yard variance in front of the property. It is a neutral change. It is a new fence, but it is the same height, the same style, and the same location as the existing fence. And the purpose of this request is to document the legal approval of the fence and its location and just to allow them to replace the fence in the same location and the same style. So the applicant has submitted a letter which was distributed to all board members prior to the meeting. They have also submitted email documentation confirming they've talked to their HOA and that they are permitted to change the fence and the existing location in the same style. Here's a view of what the property looks like. The side you see right now is facing Zarring Court. And as you can see, it does go four and a half feet in front of the property line, in line with the existing shrubbery. We've notified all neighbors within 100 feet of the property. We have not received any calls or emails regarding this request. So when reviewing, the application says finds that the circumstance is existing, not as a result of the action of the applicant. Their request only slightly deviates from the fence setback, and they are subject to two front yards. And by this definition of a front yard, they are actually on their legal front yard of Zarring Court, not just their side front yard of So if the board is considering approving this request, staff recommends that the board considers the following. The Board of Zoning Appeals may only grant variances to the Sharonville zoning code. So it does not apply to homeowners and homeowners associations. It sounds like they've already worked with their homeowners association. So that was just a reminder for them. A fence permit will be required prior to construction. So if the board grants experience, they still will have to go and file a permit with the city. And then finally, that all improvements and work indicated shall be approved as part of the fence setback variance, and it must be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance of the approved variant. So that's all we have for you related to this case. I did notice Adam is present. If he would like, he can unmute himself, and if the board has any questions, he can address them.
I am happy to answer any questions. All right, so long story short, the fence that's going to be put up is the exact same as the other fence in terms of gate materials location?
Fortunately, identical. The aesthetic stays the same. I don't know if I don't know what other differences happen in fencing over a 15-year period, but yes, the goal is to replace an identical fence.
Okay, and you've had no complaints or no questions from your neighbor? I guess to be to your rear yard on Zarring where your fence is in front of their front building line, as the picture shows?
I have not received any written contact. That is actually the neighbor we're working with or who approached us and let us know that, you know, they're going to replace their fence, and we got together and thought we might be able to save some money if we do it at the same time.
Okay.
He was the one who contacted the fencing company on my behalf.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing or hearing none? Are there any questions or comments from those in attendance this evening on this call? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion on this variance as presented this evening? With the findings of the staff regarding that the circumstances which exist were not a result from the actions of the applicant, that their request only slightly deviates from the fence setback requirements as written in the Sharonville zoning code, and that all corner lots are faced with two front yards, and the applicant's proposed fence would be installed within their legal front yard facing Zarring Court, along with the considerations by the staff that the Board of Zoning Appeals is only granting the variance to the Sharonville zoning code, so this does not apply to any additional standards that the HOA may put in place. Number two, the fence permit will be required prior to any construction. And number three, that all improvements and work indicated shall be approved as a part of this setback variance and must be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved variance. So do I have a motion on this variance?
I'd like to make that motion. This is Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Andy, for the second. Mr. Creech, would you please call the roll?
Motion to approve with conditions, Mr. Coulter?
Based on the fact that the fence is identical to the one that's being replaced in it there in a corner lot, which is their hardship, I vote yes.
Mr. Eisen?
I agree about yes.
Mr. Egan Burger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Pernick?
Yes.
Mr. Goldie?
On the call? He's on mute. Dusty, take yourself off mute?
Mr. Goldie?
Well?
Yes. Can you hear me, gentlemen? Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, and with that, Mr. Goller, your variance has been approved. Thank you. Can I make the recommendation if you're not speaking, if you can put your computer or phone on mute, because I'm getting a lot of feedback. Thank you.
All righty. So the second case on the agenda was submitted by Wesley DeLong of 3846 Sharonview Drive in Sharonville, Ohio, in the R1B zoning district. Wesley is put rear yard four-foot side yard variance from the Sharonville zoning 5.09 and 1131.05 in the Sharon for their property 3846 Sharonview Drive in the R1B zoning district. This request would allow them to install a deck that would extend to the extended to their backyard, leaving 33 feet of rear yard depth and six feet of side yard depth. The Sharonville zoning code does allow flexibility for properties in the front and side yard to have architectural features or unenclosed deck areas. It does not include the rear yard. The Sharonville zoning code states in the R1B zoning district, the minimum rear yard setback is 35 feet and the minimum side yard depth. So on the side yard is where they're planning on installing the deck. We reached the property and we noticed there is an existing ramp on the side of the property, which is nearly equivalent to the deck that they are proposing to install. I did ask the applicant, the ramp was installed prior to purchasing the house, so it is not for actual need of a wheelchair accessible ramp, but maintaining that distance would allow the house to maintain accessibility. The applicant submitted two different proposals for the board to consider. The first proposal, as you can see, is a straight line, and it would go six feet away from the property line. The second proposal slightly so that you maintain so that you accessibility and at some point it turns down to We've notified all neighbors within 100 feet of the property. We have received many complaints and you all wanted to let you know that she
Here, can I? I need to interrupt you. There is some more feedback. I think Dusty's phone is not muted, but there's a lot of feedback. I'm having trouble hearing you.
I can actually mute everyone, so I can try to go through. I think that's better. All righty. So his next door neighbor at 3854 Sharonview Drive, Christina Hancock, wanted to submit this letter in support. Additionally, we received a phone call from 3783 Cornell Road, the neighbor directly behind the property. The resident living behind wanted to let the board know he had no opposition to the two-foot rear yard variance. However, he wanted to let his neighbor know that the previous owner did have some issues with stormwater run-up in their backyard, and they did some work 20 years ago to prevent erosion of the backyard, so we wanted to make sure that building into the rear yard wouldn't cause any deterioration issues down the road. But as far as the two feet goes, he had no concern or objection. But as far as the two feet goes, he had no concern or objection. So in summary, Wesley DeLong is requesting a two foot rear yard variance and a four foot side yard variance in the Sharonville zoning code. 1131.05 and 1125.09. Upon review of the application, staff finds that the side yard green would allow maintenance of the existing stuff of the ramp. And provide accessibility to the backyard deck area. We also find that the. Variance would only slightly deviate from the unenclosed variances or allowances provided by the city's codes for the side and front yard. So if the board is considering to approve this this request, staff recommends the following considerations. Building permit approval will be required prior to any construction and board approval only reduces the. And it does not guarantee building approval. And also that all improvements and work indicated on the construction drawing and documents shall be approved as part of this variance. And must be installed in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved variant. So I did see Wesley in attendance. I can make sure he is unmuted or not Wesley, you can unmute yourself and address the board or the board can ask you a question.
I, yep, I'm here. I can answer any questions. Hey Paul, you're muted if you're talking.
There we go. Thank you. If you, Mr. Long, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Wesley DeLong and I live at 3846 Sharonview Drive for the past three years.
Thank you. I see that you've proposed two site plan options to me or you're actually asking for the minimum variance needed for. For either of those, is there one that you prefer over the other?
I prefer the first option where it's just a straight shot. There's not a jag into the walkway. Just be, you know, for continuity sake, be. That's where it's, you know, most of the trouble seems. On that corner of the encroachment.
Other than that, the deck is proposed to be the same size square footage wise, correct?
The notch would take some out, but yeah, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Wesley, this is Tom Pernick. I think I visited you yesterday. Question, the one concern about the neighbor, are you aware of the runoff issues that that Sarah talked about?
Yeah, no, I just came into the knowledge of that when Sarah told me earlier last week. I planned on putting some perforated pipe down to kind of allow for better drainage. It hasn't really been an issue since the past three years I've been living here, but I've been made aware of it. Thank you.
And a question for Sarah and John, that notification from that neighbor, their property isn't affected by runoff, correct? They're merely stating that they wanted to make sure that the applicant, when they put this deck in, was aware that there are drainage problems on their own property. Is that correct? Did I read that right?
Yes, correct. They they had some initial concerns because they thought he was building 33 feet in to his backyard. And he wanted to make sure that that was probably too much. But when I told him it was only a two feet variance and there's 33 feet of rear yard. He just wanted to make sure that they were aware that there was work done to prevent the backyard erosion. And that was something he needed to be aware of. So if he wanted to plant vegetation or do something, he could, but he had no objection. He just wanted the residents to be aware.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board this evening? Seeing or hearing none, any questions or comments from any of those on the call this evening? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion on this variance as presented with the staff recommendations slash considerations that the building permit approval. Will be required prior to any construction. Board approval only reduces the setback requirement and does not guarantee building approval. And number two, that all improvements and work indicated on the construction drawings and documents shall be approved as a part of this variance. And must be installed, maintained in in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved variance, which includes building and exterior finishes.
Yeah, I, I first.
Thank you, Andy, for the first.
You know, I'll second.
Thank you, Tom, for the second.
Paul, could I just interrupt? There's two plans here. Are we approving both plans or the other?
So the applicant preferred option number one, which is in line with their unenclosed roof entrance. So that is my recommendation for moving forward if there's no objection by the board.
That's fine here.
Okay, so we'll add site plan option one to that variance request. Mr. Creature, would you please call the roll?
Okay, to approve with conditions, option number one, Mr. Culture?
Because the deck is in line with the unenclosed porch, which currently exists. And the applicant is requesting the mini minimum variance needed for this project, I vote yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Mr. Eganberger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Goldie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, your variance has been approved. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, so items number three and items number four are very similar. So I just wanted to set the stage a little bit. Both properties are budding, but they have two different property owners. They're both in the Northern Overlay. This Northern Lights Tax Increment Financing District. But they are not in the Northern Overlay Lights District. Which basically means they do not follow the design guidelines, but they are in the incentivized area for economic development. The city received a complaint on January 16th, 2020 for both signs. They're both redevelopment sites and they both do not currently have an occupying use. But each case is going to be reviewed separately. They are different sign types. They're on different properties. They have different sign conditions. They're on different lot sizes. And each site has different lot readiness or site readiness and the proposals are slightly different. So as mentioned before, the area in yellow is the Northern Lights Overlay Design District. That was established in 2007. And those are the areas that have specific guidelines on what signs can look like within the Northern Lights District. And then the area in red is Northern Overlay, the Northern Lights Tax Increment Financing District, which the city incentivizes for redevelopment. But does not currently have design guideline standards. So the first item, case number three, was submitted by Montu Bendy. On behalf of 1171 Durham LLC on 11171 Dalen Drive in Sharonville, Ohio, in the General Business District. So Montu Bendy, on behalf of the property located at 11171 Dalen Drive. Is requesting a variance from Sharonville Codified Ordnance 1153.20 to modify an abandoned sign on a development site. To use for real estate and site marketing in lieu of removing the sign. And the structure located in the General Business District. So the City of Sharonville zoning code 1153.20 classified an abandoned sign as a public nuisance due to deterioration and lack of use and proper maintenance. Once written a notice, once a written notice is distributed by code enforcement. They are required to completely remove the sign within 30 days. The code also classifies an obsolete sign as a sign that advertises, that no longer advertises the business after a period of 90 days. And it becomes an abandoned sign. The Sharonville 2030 Plan, which we had a public hearing about yesterday for city council, which is pending adoption. Theme number five, redefine a vision for a place highlights the Northern Lights District as one of our four unique areas and quarters. That are an integral part of the city's identity and vibrancy. So background on this property, it was a formal travel lodge. It is on a flag lot located near I-75. It's been vacant for several years. Undergone some renovation. It's in the Northern Lights Tip District. It is not currently in the Northern Overlay District design boundaries. The sign has been classified by code enforcement as obsolete and abandoned. It is a tall ground sign. It has two empty sign message areas. It's installed approximately five feet away from the right of way. Under current applied zoning, it is nonconforming because it sets because it sets back less than 15 feet from the property line. If you consider if it were to change to Northern Lights Overlay District zoning. It would meet the setback requirement, however, the sign does exceed the eight feet in height and does not match the design standards for the overlay district. The city received a complaint on 116/2020. Code enforcement has worked and spoken with the applicant throughout the process, providing delays due to COVID related issues. And then in May 2020, the applicant started to discuss the possibility of keeping his sign. And then on 7/27, the applicant applied for a variance. His request is to maintain the existing sign to market the property for redevelopment. And then. In order to keep the sign, he would clean it and paint the sign with a vinyl face. Here's a view of the property. As you can see, it's this flag lot right here. So there is a small amount of frontage on Dalen Drive. This is the existing sign. As you can see, there are two sign message areas. The applicant did not submit a proposal for a visual image of what the sign would look like if improved. And improved, but he did say he would clean it and paint it with a vinyl face. We've notified all property owners within 100 feet. We received one call from a neighbor just to verify he did not have to attend. And then we received no emails. So a few questions for the board to consider. Is the Sharonville 2030 zoning code is not complete. And it has not been updated, but it will probably be updated next year. How long should the applicant have to comply with the sign improvement? Code enforcement only only is required to give 30 days. The board allows up to a year to comply. Code enforcement has already given about eight months. Another question for the board is can the existing sign be updated by a future tenant? The sign is an elevated ground sign on a flag lot, so the location wouldn't really change as much, but the type of sign could potentially change. And then is the board satisfied with the proposed improvements to maintain the sign? Not entirely sure what clean sign means or what a vinyl face, where the vinyl face would be added. If it would be full sign message areas or if it would just be a large cabinet area. And then if they aren't satisfied, should the sign just be removed in the interim? Because a new hotel is going to want a new sign anyway. So. The summary of the variance is Montu Bendy on behalf of 11171 Dalen Drive is requesting a variance to modify an abandoned sign. To develop, to use for real estate and marketing in lieu of removing an abandoned sign required by code enforcement in the General Business District. So if staff is considering receiving a class or staff is, if the board is considering approving this request. Staff recommends the following considerations. The signed variance is a temporary approval, so after 18 months or less if the site is sold. For a development sign would resume the abandoned status and be required to be removed within 30 days. The improvements to the sign, including face change with real estate project content are required to be complete within 30 days of approval. And the permits are required for both the face change and the demolition of the sign at the end of the 18 months. Well, I guess it would be 19 months if you count 30 days for removal. And then all sign improvements and work indicated in the temporary sign variance request must be installed and maintained in good repair and renewed. At the end of the temporarily committed period. So I am not sure if Montu is on. Try to look through.
Mr. Beatty, if you're on, if you could, or Ms. Beatty, I'm sorry. If the Montu is on the phone, if you could unmute and state your name and address for the record, please? Is there anybody on the call that is representing the applicant for this variance on this call?
So I see there are a few phone numbers. I'm going to try to unmute everyone.
Sarah, you just put yourself on mute? There you go. Is there anyone on the lawn right now that is representing this applicant or application for a variance? Okay, well, we can have two options here. We can table this till next month or see if the applicant hops on the phone for the call. Or we can discuss and make a decision in their absence. What's the board's pleasure this evening?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss some items concerning it while we're here together.
Okay. Floor is yours, Mr. Pernick?
Yeah, so I guess what I was looking at is, you know, one of the discussion points was if a new hotel buys or buys a place, they're going to create their own sign, right? It looks like it's got a flange. It's bolted on the bottom. And I think it's hard to disconnect the wiring and taking the flange bolts out, you know. Of course, getting a crane there to remove it. But I think for the work that they're going to, they're proposing or we're proposing that they paint it and, you know, make it look decent is probably going to be or not, I guess. But I mean, I just, it is an eyesore. There's no doubt about it and even. I don't know. I think just removing is. What I would just recommend.
I agree with Tom. This is Dan. It is an eyesore and I think anybody that ends up developing that property is going to want to put in, submit their own sign proposals with new signs and that kind of thing. And if if this is if this is the intent of the owner to market the property with this sign. I would move that we see the proposal of that marketing. And how the sign would would look with that marketing on that sign. So right now they're just saying they want to, they want to market it with the sign, but they've submitted no plan at all for it. So I would be in favor of just removing the sign myself.
Sarah, can you re-mute everybody, please?
Okay, everyone.
Okay, thank you. I agree with with Tom and Dan. I think the only reason the applicant is coming, coming for a variance is because the city flagged them for an abandoned sign. That area back there really needs to be cleaned up. There are some very nice properties. Back there, the true did a tremendous job in terms of their design, their building, their signage. I saw them out there maintaining their property today. And and these are the two last remaining pieces back there that really need to be fixed, if you will. And what what type of sign, John or Sarah, could the applicant put up to market the property? If this was requested to be or required to be removed, if we deny this variance, what what could they put up back there? Because I noticed also that there's like a informational sign when you get onto Prince Lane and Dalen Drive. That has a few open slots on it as well. I'm sure that, you know, the travel lodge might take one or not, where the, these two rear properties would probably take one of each of those. So if we deny the variance, this has been required to be removed, what could they put up in terms of a real estate sign for this property to market it?
Oh yeah, they could put up a separate real estate sign. And it would have to, you know, be a lot smaller, a lot shorter. The, but for a new use, they would have, the new sign would have to meet with the setback for that zoning district. Which depending on the type of sign could be either 15 feet if it's a ground sign or 20 feet or 15 feet. If it's a pole sign and 25 feet if it's a ground sign, which is the one like you see here.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board?
I do have one other question and that is, and when I was up there, I didn't really, I mean, I. I couldn't tell if you could actually see that from the highway, if that was their intent, but I wondered about the height anyways.
It's it's so overgrown there. The former Burbank's property, which is the next case, that property is so overgrown, you can't see that sign from the highway. It's merely an informational sign that once you get back to the end of that street to turn left. Because if I recall correctly, that sign was there and I think an arrow pointing to the. Because if I recall correctly, that sign was there, and I think an arrow pointing to the left said the Travel Lodge was down around the corner.
Okay, thank you.
You're correct, Paul. There used to be a directional sign there in the opening.
Right, okay, thank you. Councilman Tackers, do you have any input on, on this?
You know, I agree with the board on this one. It is an eyesore, and by looking at the picture, it looks like the whole inside of that sign's been gutted anyways. I, I kind of agree with the board to where if he does sell the property, a hotel's going to want to put up their own chain sign, then that way the board will know what's going on. And I feel that with it being such an eye sore, some of the nicer hotels back there, I, you can't see it from the highway anywhere. And unknown on how long it hasn't even worked. I'll, I'll agree with the board that it should come down.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this variance application this evening? Seeing and hearing none. So do I have a recommendation by the board on this variance as presented?
I propose we vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perenek. What are we, so you want to vote on the variance request as presented? And it's a simple yes or no, correct? So if it is a yes, the conditions that the staff have put in their staff summary are applicable. I won't read them. It's the four, four considerations. Obviously, if we vote no, the variance will not be approved and the sign will require to be removed. So with that, Mr. Perenek, I have a first, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Eisen for the second. Mr. Creach, would you please call the roll?
Motion to approve with conditions. Mr. Coulter?
Based on the fact that the sign has been there for several months after the city has asked them to remove it, and it is in an abandoned and obsolete status, I vote no.
Mr. Eisen?
I vote no as well. Additionally, to what Paul mentioned, the fact that we have no drawings or plans or renderings of what the proposal would be for the marketing.
Mr. Dragonberger?
I vote no for the same reasons.
Mr. Sasser?
Vote no.
Mr. Pernick?
And I vote no for the same reasons.
Mr. Gold?
No.
And with that, the variance has not been approved as presented this evening. So I guess the building department will contact the applicant since they are not in attendance this evening and inform them of that decision. Thank you.
All right, the second item on the agenda was submitted on behalf of Sean Pan of OSL Real Estate Investments. He's headed out 11167 Dalen Drive in Sharonville, Ohio, in the general business district. I won't repeat this slide, but the applicant is requesting to do the same thing to modify an abandoned sign in lieu of removing a sign that's been classified as abandoned and obsolete. And then the city of Sharonville, Sharonville 2030 Plan classifies the Northern Lights District as a place of, that is an integral place for the identity and vibrancy of the city. So the specifics related to this case is the property is a former restaurant fronting Dalen Drive. It's been vacant for several years. The building is, actually, to be honest, I think I used the image from Google. It was boarded up in the image that I received. And it is in the taxing, that financing district, but it is not in the overlay district for design standards. It is classified as an obsolete and abandoned sign. The existing sign is rested. It is a pole sign. There is only one message sign area. It is approximately seven feet from the right of way. Under current zoning applied, it is not conforming to the 15 foot setback. If it were to become Northern overlay district zoning, it would need the setback requirement. However, it is a pole, which is not permitted. It does not match the design allowance, and it exceeds the height allowance for signage. Case history, a resident complained about the sign in January, January of 2020. Code enforcement had tried various times to reach the applicant, including certified mail, but wasn't able to until around June, when the applicant was informed of his neighbor submitting a variance for a similar request. So on 72720, the applicant applied for a variance. The applicant is requesting to remove the, or instead of removing the existing sign, the applicant is requesting to market the site for redevelopment. The applicant has contacted a sign company to make improvements, including painting the sign, painting the sign, painting the sign post, the frame, and installing changes to the cabinet area. So it's right next door to the flag lot, as you can see here. Here is a picture of the proposal to improve the sign. So the existing and proposed, this is what the sign would look like once finished. We've notified all property owners within 100 feet. We only received one call, like I mentioned before, just to verify that the neighbor did not have to attend the meeting. And we received no emails regarding the case. So a few things for the board to consider. The 2030 plan has not been updated, and it will probably be completed next year. How long should the applicant have to comply with the sign improvements? Can it even be updated for a new tenant? Is the board satisfied with the proposed improvements? And should the sign be removed in the interim? So it looks like I might have accidentally deleted the slide, but it was the same conditions pretty much as the last case. If the board wanted to consider approving this sign. I do see Sean is in attendance and can address the board.
Good evening, this is Sean Pan.
Okay, you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
This is Sean Pan, 3175 Brendan Trail, Evendale, Ohio. I'm also the owner of True by Hilton, the new hotel next door, yeah.
Okay. So the sign, as you're proposing, would only temporarily be used for real estate and marketing of that property. Is that the way that I read your variance?
That's correct. We had to sub, originally I purchased the entire lot where the true sitting at, and also the Burbank property. So when we decided to build the hotel, we had to divide the lot into two plots. So our, our next plan is to market the, the property, the lot, to, to be sold hopefully for some sort of banquet related facility. So we had some interest a couple of years ago. But right now, we pretty much open to everything. But my other main purpose is really to, to, I need, I need to have a sign. I'm going to say no parking, private property, no parking. 3.2 acre for sale. Currently, we, we often get vehicles that park there. An outdoor vehicle, whether it be semi or some dump truck or something. So we have a place, a concrete parking curb to block off the northern border of the property. Okay, so, and we also place two posts with a chain to block off the, the south entrance, south driveway where the sign is. So the entire property is completely blocked off. And we will only allow, let's say, guests of the two, of the two by Hilton Hotel that has a parking permit, then we will go over there, unlock the chain, and let the large vehicle park there.
Yeah, when I was out there today, I, I did see that. But I also noticed that there was a large red storage container and two minivans that were sitting in there. I'm assuming that those are, are your property?
That's correct, yes. Let me address our real site. Yeah, we, we were getting graffiti painted out to the, the stores, two store container. We, we have painted over the graffiti on all sides with the kind of safety red paint. And we plan on removing those two story container within the next 60 days. We're actually going to sell it back to the, to the container company that where we bought it from. And the minivan, we have finally got towing company sign to be posted in our parking lot. So we will be towing the minivans, another abandoned vehicle that they actually intentionally abandoned there, towing straps still underneath the car there. So we'll have that minivan tow within the next three days easily, yeah.
Okay, that, that addresses my concerns. Now, the Kluski, Kluski Sign Associates, who you hired to kind of mock up this real estate sign, are they going to be the ones that are doing the work to clean up that sign and make the sign face? So it's going to be professionally done by them?
Well, we will, I will probably have my own staff. Simply, we can send down the sign, paint it, paint the middle frame ourselves easily. But the Kluski sign, they will be providing the, the plastic panel to, to change all the, the facing of the sign.
Okay. My concern is just, again, it's, it's, it's kind of an eyesore back there. And I know the sign's been back there forever, but it really doesn't help the residents that live on Dalen Drive, nor the businesses. And, and you're the owner of the property for the true. So I'm sure that, that you're going to do a good job. But I just want to make sure that, you know, that you consider thoroughly cleaning up and painting that, and that you're only going to be using it for real estate to market the property. And then once you find an applicant for that, I believe I'm correct in your statement that you will remove that sign structure once you find somebody who, who purchases or shows interest in that property. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely, right.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board?
Okay, if I, if I may add one more thing. I heard the last, a few minutes ago, a question about directional signs at right, right behind Bob Evans, and also at the beginning. Okay, those two, we actually, we actually, I actually own those two signs. So I simply charged the participating hotel like a $400 fee a year to pay for the electric. But unfortunately, the other hotel owner hasn't been paying, paying the bill. But anyway, I'm going to put new faces, new sign panels, which I have submitted to Mr. Creach, Creach already, he saw it last week, that we will be replacing all new panels and with, under those two directional signs. Also, the sign right below the Bob Evans sign, it says hot, hot on sweet with an arrow pointing, that will be replaced with a True by Hilton sign.
Questions or comments from the board?
Paul, I want to ask a question to John. John, real quick, if the board approves Mr. Pan doing this, are we looking at any repercussions down the road for any signs that have been abandoned? And say the owner decides to pay a company, come in, clean it up, and advertise it property for sale? Can they do that or not? Would that be up to the board?
I'm not sure I understand the question. What do you mean?
Okay, if, if there's an empty business or an empty lot that's got a, a bank, which would the city consider abandoned?
Right.
And the owner gets notified saying, you know, I want to try to sell this property. You know, I'm going to have a sign company come in, clean up the sign, and advertise it for sale until it's sold.
Right.
Are we looking at any repercussions down the road? Like say, if it's an empty building that says, well, hey, I can clean up my sign, put it for sale, and not have to pay like, say, a real estate company?
So I think I understand your question. So basically, we didn't mention this, but the city over the past, past few years has been going out and looking for a lot of these abandoned obsolete signs that are just sitting out in front of abandoned businesses.
Correct.
And a lot of times we get compliance or a new business moves in and they reuse the sign. And a lot of these have been vacant for a really long time, like some of these.
Right.
So that, and, and in this case, the owner of this property and the one previously had said, hey, we're actively trying to sell these properties. You know, we're having difficulty for whatever reason. We want to use it for, rather than take it down, we want to use it for real estate marketing purposes. But that's just for this. So for anyone else to do that, if I understand you correctly, correctly, they would have to come to the board. And it should be treated independently of, of one another.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, is that this would be automatic down the road that a person would still have to come in front of the board.
Yeah, it would not be a blanket citywide approval or anything like that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to double check on. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Paul.
I believe this is the same conditions. Paul or John can verify if they have the paperwork in front of them. That was applied to this case as the last one, that the sign variance is temporary and after 18 months or less, if the site is redeveloped, it would resume the abandoned status as required and be removed within 30 days. And that the improvements of the sign, including the face change with real estate project content, are required to be completed within 30 days of approval. And that permits are required for the face change and demolition of the sign after the 19 months. And that all improvements and work indicated on the temporary sign variance as requested be installed and maintained and good repair and renewed at the end of the temporarily permitted period. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I apologize for deleting that slide on accident.
Do I have a, I have a question for the board is, I assume this would be a temporary variance with certain limitations on how long it would be in effect?
That's what Sarah just read.
Right.
So essentially, the number one is, is the timeframe. Mr. Pan is, is an active owner of the property just to the south of this. And I think it would be in his best interest to make the old Burbank's property look as nice as possible, including the real estate sign. But yeah, if, if we go with what staff is recommending, it would give him 18 months with that sign in place to, to sell the property. If not, it says that the sign will resume abandoned status and will be required to be removed within 30 days. So I guess the question I have for staff is, could Mr. Pan come back in and request an extension? If, and if the, it meets the approval of city staff and the Board of Appeals, could that be extended? Or with the way, if we consider your condition, is it just an automatic abandonment status and removal within 30 days?
I would, I guess something I would say is that if, if Mr. Pan can show that, that he has actively been looking and that it's just not, just a matter of not just putting a sign up there and, and sitting on it. And I think if he's actively looking at it, I think that'd be something we can certainly positively look at. But yeah.
So John and Sarah, even if, if as a part of this variance request, we go with your conditions or your considerations, that number one would not prevent Mr. Pan, if the property has not sold within 18 months, it would not prevent him from coming back in and requesting another extension for good cause shown?
Yeah, so when he's approaching the 18 month period, that's when he would contact us again and try to get a variance. Once it hits 18 months, it would go into code enforcement. So as long as he came in before that 18 months hit, he wouldn't have any issues with code enforcement.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing or hearing none?
Oh, yes, sorry, it took me a minute to get to that mute button. Another reason, I think, to approve this is he's also going to have that no parking, private property notes on there, you know, with, with people coming up there and doing the. You know, with with people coming up there and doing the graffiti and leaving abandoned cars there. I think that might help alleviate that a little bit.
Yeah, I think a little TLC to that property and sign, cleaning it up would make it less desirable for people to come and hang out back there. I know it's kind of away from everything else, but yeah, I agree with you, Matt. Any questions or comments from those on the call this evening regarding this case? Seeing none, we have no further discussion. Is there a motion on this variance as presented this evening with the four staff recommendations? Number one, that the sign variance is temporary approval after eighteen months or less. If the site is sold for new development, the sign will resume the abandoned status and will be required to be removed within thirty days. Number two, that the improvements to the sign, including a face change with real estate project content, are required to be completed within thirty days of approval. Number three, that all permits are required for face change and or demolition of sign. And number four, that all sign improvements and work indicated on this temporary sign variance request must be installed and maintained in good repair and removed at the end of the temporarily permitted period of time. I'd also like to ask that the applicant, as he's indicated on the call, remove the two storage containers and the two vehicles that are on that property within the sixty-day timeframe that that he's suggested that he would do. So do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a motion on this variance or further discussion on this variance as presented this evening?
I filed, we go for the motion.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Matt. Mr. Creach, would you please call the roll?
Motion to approve with the conditions plus the addition of those other two conditions regarding the storage containers and abandoned vehicle. Mr. Coulter?
Given the fact that the applicant owns the property where the true is, and they've done a great job in terms of marketing and cleaning up that property, and that the applicant is going to clean up that sign and replace the sign face so it looks professional in nature, and clean up that property as well to market the the property, I vote yes.
Mr. Eisen?
I vote yes.
Mr. Gegenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Parnik?
I vote yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. With that, your variance has been approved.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the fifth item on the agenda is for the applicant Frank Science Quaid of ten five sixty-three Lee Murray Drive in Sharonville, Ohio, in the R one B zoning district. Frank is requesting a variance from the Sharonville zoning ordinance. The approval granted on February twelfth, twenty twenty, to install a six-foot privacy fence on the south side of his property in lieu of replacing the fence gate with a six-foot fence in the R one V zoning district. On February twelfth, twenty twenty, the board approved a variance to install a pool in its current location approximately six feet, according to cages and three feet from the fence, with the following conditions, that the applicant is required to replace the existing gate on the south side of the pool with a six-foot privacy fence. The applicant is required to replace a portion of the existing chain link fence with a six-foot privacy fence. And the applicant shall work with the Department of Community Development to determine a suitable amount of screening required on the northern property line to provide privacy to the neighbor to the north. And also that the pool area, including required privacy fence, shall be maintained and in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with setback approval. So a bit of an update on the case, the applicant has submitted a pool permit, which has been approved based on the variance conditions, and the pool permit has been inspected and closed out. The applicant has purchased vinyl privacy fence material to install on the north and south side of the fence to provide screening to both neighbors from the pool. The fence on the south meets zoning requirements, but it does not satisfy the conditions for approval granted in February. The Sharonville Codified Ordinance one one two five point eighteen allows for privacy fences as a conditional use, provided that they are in the rear side yard. It does not exceed six feet in height. They're weather resistant and well-maintained. It's finished on both sides facing the budding property owners. Or it's finished facing the budding property owner, and there are no back-to-back fences permitted with a minimum of two feet, six inches separation between any existing fences. And Sharonville Ordinance one one six five point oh nine states that variances once granted shall be null and void after one year if the applicant fails to act on terms and conditions for which such variance was granted. So just to recap, in case everyone is wondering, the picture on the top is the existing gate, which is the current required gate that they must replace with a six-foot privacy fence. The applicant has purchased the vinyl fence as shown below, and they are ready to install and pending approval of the board, this fence along their driveway and to the north of the property. So here is the submitted site plan from the applicant. The applicant is proposing to install a fence along the driveway between four feet on the top corner to seven feet away from the property line. And then also on the north side to provide screening from the property on the north. Just kind of, this is an aerial view of the property. And then the area in red is where the proposed fence would be installed. And it would be white vinyl. We've notified all property owners within a hundred feet. We have only received one call, phone call from Philip Westler, property owner of ten five five seven Lee Murray Drive, to confirm the fence's location would be between four and seven feet away from the property line, not where the flags are marked currently on the site. He will not be in attendance today. He just wanted to confirm the location and that the variance would not change during the report. So if the board is considering modifying the pool variance request granted on to twelve twenty twenty, staff recommends the following considerations. In italics are the conditions that are already existing, in bold, are the conditions that would be changed. At a previous meeting, the board had discussed possibly changing the comply by date. It's February twelve, twenty twenty-one. So condition number four is for the board to consider increasing the comply by date so that the fence would have to be installed quicker than February twelfth, twenty twenty. And then condition number one would change the location of the six-foot privacy fence to anywhere on the south side, but specifically where he's proposing it, four to some, you know, away from the property line, and not having to replace the six-foot, the existing gate with a six-foot fence. I do see Frank in attendance. So if he would like to unmute himself, he can address the board. Or if the board has any specific questions, they are free to address that now.
Stinkwitz, if you could just please again state your name and address for the record?
Frank Stankwitz. One oh five six three La Marie Drive, Sharonville, Ohio, four five two four one.
Hey, do you want to add anything to Sarah's presentation on your variances presented this evening?
Well, basically, I was just wondering to address, like I said, I put, I'll, I want to put a privacy fence to, on both sides and want to, you know what I mean, to restrict, the neighbor doesn't want to see my pool. To me, I'd rather put a privacy fence up, and that way we don't have any viewing our yard and everything involved with it as far as, you know, he's got a chair that sits there and faces my yard where he watches my wife and stepkids, you know? And that's why I want to put a privacy fence on that side of the fence. But your zoning says it's got to be two feet from the existing fence line. I mean, I could adapt it by moving it to four feet and seven feet, which would be would be within your guidelines. But, you know, at at one point, I just feel that, you know, it's a neighbor that wants privacy. You know, I don't see why I got to move it so far, you know, two feet from an existing fence line. It, I'm going to lose two feet by moving it closer to my pool versus the side of the fence because of the grade and the yard. So I'm kind of asking you to, I mean, I'm going to do, I'm going to put the fence up either at the lower spot, like I said, or if the zone could, you know, permit me to put my fence right along it's adjacent to the other fence, that would be perfect. Then.
Okay, that's nothing to say. The fence.
This is my wife.
Hi, I'm Stacy Stankwitz. The fence that we have is going to be two and a half feet away from his fence. We were okay with that. It's on a hill, so the fence will, it would be lower so he can still see over. If we put it up against his fence, which I actually talked to the neighbor, and he said he would sign whatever papers we need, this was probably three weeks ago. If we put the fence at the edge of the driveway, it's not going to serve a purpose. It's not, the the gate, if we put, use the gate, we can't really do that because the gate has to stay open because we have animals, the dogs have to go down and use the restroom. So that's absolutely absolute. So he wants distance from us, we want distance from him. So the only option is, if he really wants this, we can put the fence, our fence, up against his, and he'll have a lot more privacy, and we'll also have a lot more privacy.
And you're talking about the neighbor to the south of your property, correct? Where your garage is?
Where our garage is.
Okay, so so where you've drawn the fence against your driveway, you're asking to modify that request now so that your privacy fence is directly abutting his fence?
Right, right.
So I guess the question is, how is it, how is it maintained then? Because you're going to have some distance, assuming you're within your property, you're going to have some distance between that chain link fence to the south and your fence to the north. When I was out there the other day, the chain link fence that's leaning, is that, is that your fence or is?
That that is his fence. It's leaning because he had wood piled up three feet over the fence line. That was in our yard, in our back side of our yard, which the wood fell over, and this is why all this incident has happened. We've, we've had this pool for almost four years, no incident. He, it wasn't ice work around until now because we had an incident with the wood falling in my yard. So then this comes up. So.
Okay, I understand. And then going out and looking at your property, there is an obvious grade change. I understand that from from the south to the north, it does go down quite a bit. I guess, you know, since the, since the Mr. Westler isn't here, and I don't think that the city has received anything from him stating that he has no problem placing your privacy fence against his chain link fence, I I personally can't take that as as affirmative. So my question would be then, is that you get that in writing from Mr. Westler?
Paul, if I can.
I did.
Paul, if I can.
I actually.
This is Tom. I I was there yesterday. Stacy, I talked to you, and I went next door and talked to your neighbor as well yesterday after I met with you. And he, he was, number one, he was very upset the fact that the board even passed the variance back in February. He was, he was told me, because I I I even told him, and Stacy, when you and I went out there, we saw that, I saw that rebar stakes right up against his fence, you know, very close to his fence. And he told, he pulled out the notice that the Board of Appeals sent out to all the neighbors. And he said, look, he says, they're, they're, they're proposing something totally different than what's shown out there and, you know, physically out there with their proposal, you know? So he actually did confirm what you were just saying, that you're trying to modify something that is not even in the paperwork here. I I want to ask one question, though. What has changed? Back in February, you agreed to raise up that that swinging fence. And of course, what I'm hearing is that that fence, that that gate is left open all the time. But what what has changed? Why wouldn't you just go ahead and raise that up like you agreed to last time and get that privacy you're looking for? I think I'm.
Actually, I was, I'm sorry, I was up there at the last meeting, but it makes sense for us not to do that because we have grandkids and they swim. Our dogs have to go through the gate to use the bathroom in the backyard. So if we keep the gate closed all the time, like, it does not make sense. We have to come outside all the way through the yard, open the gate just to let the dogs out to use the restroom, and then bring them back in. And if we have family over here, the gate's going to be open because we have family in the pool and out of the pool, back and forth, and it's, it's inconvenience for us as homeowners to have to do that. That's why we decided, let's just put a privacy fence up, make him happy, make us happy, and then there's no problem. He, he can't see the pool, or we can't see him, we're fine.
Stacy, I guess I'm going to just interject, and if I may. I mean, I I was, I thought at the meeting, we didn't rule out the fact that that could be a swinging type of of gate. It just would need to be raised up. You still could go in and out, and I guess you could even modify it to make it a smaller door opening or something if you wanted to. But I I thought that everybody that was in attendance, I think Frank discussed with us, I thought.
Right, I was. But the more I thought about it, when my husband came home, it makes sense for us not to put that there.
Let me just iterate on one thing. I mean, since change since February is, you know, summertime, and we was actually out in our yard, which is where the drive, the garage door is, the driveway part of the yard. You know, that's where we might set chairs up, sunbathed, you know what I mean? Lay out, sit, because there's more room there. And that's when, like I said, you know, the neighbor's sitting staring at everybody from, that's why so what's changed since then is I want to actually put a privacy fence on the actual fence line side of that yard so that I can cut the neighbor from viewing my property. You know, and and it's doing exactly what he wanted, which is cutting the viewing of the pool per, you know, his dislike of looking at the pool. Don't have to worry about him viewing us as we lay sunbathed in my driveway, which is happening right now. That's the actual change. And to me, at that point, that's why it's actually putting a red fence up is not going to correct the problem of actually being in the driveway bathing. If I put a white privacy fence up, that will correct the problem. That's why I called and came here to make an adjustment to the approved amendment already, which was the red fence. I want to add a white privacy fence so I don't have that neighbor gawking at us as we're sitting there sunbathing. And this way, it's, it's, it's a win on both sides because it's doing what he wanted, which is not to view the pool according to him. That's why I'm addressing the board today.
But your request can be accommodated if that fence is placed along the driveway as you have in your application?
Correct.
So it doesn't really need to move any closer to your neighbor's, your neighbor's property line and his fence? So I'm assuming that you own, who owns the property between your driveway and the, the Mr. Westler's fence?
That, I'm confused what you mean, the property there is my property.
So just to the south of your garage and to the south of your driveway, between that location and Mr. Westler's fence to the south, who owns that property, you or Mr. Westler?
We own the property.
You own the property, okay. And you, your variance request is to put a privacy fence up, and I'm I'm stating, as you have actually put in your application, that privacy fence, you would like to be, at least at the time of the application, erected on the south side of your driveway, directly on the south side of your driveway, no closer to to Mr. Westler's fence, is that correct?
Yeah, well, apparently, it's supposed to be two and a half feet away from his fence. We're okay with that. We will maintain the two and a half feet, but.
Well, my. Well, I get it. I mean, but my concern is, you can barely walk between two and a half feet, you know, and so. Well, I get it. I mean, but my concern is, you can barely walk between two and a half feet, uh, you know, and so how are you gonna maintain that, that area? That's, that's the problem to me. The application says that you're gonna be within, uh, four to seven feet because your, uh, the, the property does wedge a little bit. And I'm more comfortable with that as you've requested in your variance, if that's, if that's the way that, that we move forward, because it does give you ample room for a lawnmower or for somebody to move between those two locations and cut the grass, uh, with a, with a weed eater.
I, I, I do have a suggestion, okay? I know I, I empathize with what you're saying, but, you know, you wanna get close. It's not like verbally you wanna get your fence close to the, his fence. But if you were to raise up that area, uh, between his fence and your driveway, build it up and then put your, your fence that you proposed in this application, you know, along that driveway, you would be able to have the elevation you're looking for.
Alright, that's the, that's the problem. We need the elevation because it is on a hill.
And I'm saying you raise the hill up, you, you flat, you level off that hill so that the elevation at his fence is similar to the elevation closer to your driveway. Build it up, throw dirt up there to build it up and then put your fence on top of that built up area there along your driveway. Then you've got it.
Alright, I understand that. That makes sense. But if we even do two, two and a half feet away from the fence, that's still gonna be a lot more secure in him not seeing us or, or the pool, if we put it all the way down the hill beside the driveway, which is four feet, he can see right over the fence. We put it next to the driveway.
You're not hearing what I'm saying. So I know you think it was sloped, right? You're sloped, um, from his fence down to your driveway, it slopes downward. And I'm saying that you throw dirt there and build it up, okay? You build that up so that the elevation, uh, is level at the higher elevation closer to where it is at the fence, then you could put your privacy fence right there along the driveway there. And, uh, you got your whole issue resolved. And then you can maintain, you can maintain the area behind, between your fence and his fence because it'll all be level now. That's what I'm suggesting.
Even, even with the two and a half feet from his fence, our fence, if, if that would happen, we have gravel to put back there and we can still get back there in the two and a half feet to spray it for weeds, but we have gravel in our driveway right now to actually put it down.
Uh.
That's gonna be a lot easier for us and to build up is gonna be more inconvenient.
If, if I'm, let me just reiterate, if I'm approved for the four feet and the seven feet and putting it up where I said I was going to, instead of trying to get closer to the fence line to get the elevation, uh, I'm willing to put it up right there. Like I said, as far as maintaining it, uh, I plan on taking the grass that I had here and, uh, putting gravel there so that nothing grows there. And that way it's, and, and the fence is already maintained for a lifetime or whatever technically. Uh, so there was really not gonna be any, any kind of maintenance, you know, if the weed grows, it's nothing to walk back around there to take that weed out. So that shouldn't be an issue. Uh, I just wanna get the approval for the privacy fence to be put up. And if I'm approved to put it up at four feet, instead of putting it up closer to his existing fence line, I, I understand what you're saying is building up my driveway side level with the fence line, so I got that extra level, two feet that I'm asking for, but, uh, that's a lot more than I wanna have to do to that, to correct the problem. I'll just go ahead and if you're approved, uh, let me put it up at that spot. Um, and to me, like I said, I, I don't see no reason why I should be changing that existing red fence gate if I'm putting a white privacy fence up there. That's what my main issue is, is to put the white privacy fence up and, and be done with it. That way I'm you know, screening my neighbor, be in my privacy and also screening him from the pool.
Oh, and this is a, a comment from me to the board. I am not willing to deviate from their, um, request and their application. So, uh, if they are adamant on placing this fence, uh, closer to Mr. Westler's fence, uh, directly adjacent to it, um, I'll vote for denial and then let them resubmit. But, uh, I, I personally have reviewed this variance.
But you're approving the, writing the lengths of four feet and seven feet where I asked for.
That's the only thing I'm gonna consider right now is generally where you have it on your driveway. And I'm just speaking for myself, uh, within, um, within the parameters set forth, uh, by staff as to location.
If I could ask a question of Sarah and John, wh- what is our code regarding privacy fences on the property line? I, I thought it was stitches within the property line.
Um, privacy fences can be on the property line, but they can't be on the property line if there's an existing fence. So, um, his neighbor to the south already has an existing fence, so he has to maintain a minimum of two feet six inches per code in order to have an additional fence. Um, he had proposed in his application to install it along with driveway, which which is why the board is currently considering the four to seven feet.
Good, thank you.
So, the question that comes up for me is if the neighbors would get together and take out the chain link fence and put in the privacy fence there, if this is something both neighbors want, seems like that would be the answer. But, um, so I guess a question for the homeowners, do you think you could come to that kind of resolution?
And that's something that, like, like you were stating earlier, I'd have to get him to approve putting a privacy fence where his gate is, in which I'm sure that's, that's gonna be an issue that he might agree to, to the wife, like I was understood. But I, I, I don't see him being adequate like that. Uh, like I said, I feel like he's viewing my household for a reason. He, he probably doesn't want the privacy fence, but if I'm okay to put it at the four foot section and I'm approved, then I mean, it, also, like I said, I'm just looking at if it's put up there, does that alleviate me having to put up the red gate? I mean, uh, that's what my question is.
Could, could I ask something else?
Right, go ahead.
Where it is on the driveway line, you know, where, where we had suggested building up the land, uh, two and a half feet. Would it going with an eight foot privacy fence solve some of that issues? You wouldn't have to build it.
That would solve the issue, but I, I don't even know, I didn't realize they even sold an eight foot one. And then your zoning code says it's only supposed to be six feet.
Yeah, we already purchased a six foot fence.
I can always, I assume I can take it back, uh, to put up an eight foot, that would be better.
Sure.
That would require, that would require us, I think that would require separate variants. Plus, for a fence over six feet, then you have to submit drawings actually for a building permit in addition to a, a fence permit. About what comment?
And I'll also add that when I spoke with Phil Westler yesterday, he said he was not going to attend as long as everything was exactly as presented. Um, and I read in the conditions that we were proposing.
And that's that the four foot, six, seven foot, uh, permit that I sent into the board to approve, correct?
Yeah, so, um, I, yeah, he read the letter with the four to seven feet separation, but then I also read to him the four conditions that the board was going to be considering today with the two modifications of potentially adding an earlier deadline for completion. And that it didn't necessarily matter, um, if the gate was replaced and he just had a fence on the south side, um, between four and seven feet from the property line. He just wanted to make sure that the code wasn't deviated from, as in, um, the type of.
Moving it closer, correct. Okay. So then it's, it's exactly what I'm saying. If I put it up at the four and seven foot part of my property line, uh, he's happy with that and I don't need to do, adjust the gate that's in the middle. And then everybody's happy, I guess, at that point.
It'd be nice to have, Bill, it'd be nice to have Mr. Westler in on this call.
Correct.
But to me, that's why I don't wanna deviate from this variance and give more because that's what was presented, uh, to all the, uh, budding property owners. Uh, and, you know, I think that that's a reasonable amount of, of privacy for you, whether you raise the land there and put the fence on top of that or leave it as is. But that's, that's what the application had, had identified. Um, and that's, that's what I'd like to see move forward. Uh, but I'll obviously open it up to discussion by the board to see if they wanna entertain something closer to the property fence line. But again, uh, as, as Ms. Dirks has stated, um, Mr. Westler has, is amenable to, um, the variance request if, uh, the conditions one through four as presented were followed. So, uh, to the board, uh, is there any, uh, discussion on modifying the variance to allow the fence to move closer to the south property line than is that, uh, that's been identified in the variance request itself?
Paul, I agree with you. I think it's very important that, uh, if, you know, that the property owners have noticed as to what we're considering and, and especially since they're not on the call, you know, on the webcast that, uh, that we, I would not feel comfortable changing the conditions here.
I agree with what Ian said as well. I, I think that though, um, based on my discussion with, with Mr. Wester, I, I think that, yeah, we either approve what's on here and, and not deviate from it, or we don't approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Great too. We just have to go with what's on here.
Okay. Dusty or Andy, you have any, any comment?
Uh, I'm gonna go with you, Paul, what you're saying.
Okay. Well.
Proceed with what's on.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, uh, uh, comments or questions from anybody on the call right now regarding this variance as presented this evening? Alright, seeing none or hearing none, uh, is there a motion by the board if there's no further discussion, uh, on this variance as presented this evening along with the four conditions that staff is recommending, uh, that the applicant is required to install the six foot privacy fence on the south side of the property to provide a budding neighbor with screening from pool. Uh, number two, that the applicant is required to replace a portion of the existing chain link fence with a six foot privacy fence. Uh, the applicant will work with the Department of Community Development to determine the suitable amount of screening required on the northern property line to provide privacy for the neighbor from the north. Uh, number three, that the pool area, including required privacy fencing shall be maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved setback variance. And number four, the conditions of approval shall be implemented within, um.
That's for you guys to decide. I'm sorry, I was looking for the mute button. Um, the board was supposed to determine if they wanted to keep the twelve twenty, two twelve twenty twenty one as the deadline for, um, conditions of approval, or if they wanted to modify that to the end of summer or a different date before February.
Well, the applicant has the fencing, they said. So I'm assuming that if they're approved, they're gonna start right away.
I, I assume that too. But if we wanted to change the deadline, we could, but if not, it would remain at twelve, well, or two twelve twenty one. So, that was what four was, if you guys wanted to change the date.
Two twelve twenty one or two twelve twenty? Uh, obviously two twelve twenty is, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Do, yeah, they have to complete it within one year of the initial approval of February.
Um.
I keep the deadline the same. First, I mean, he's probably gonna be installing this during the summer, fall months anyways. But I, I would just keep the deadline. But I do have one question I wanna ask. Um, so if they were to build up, let's say they were, they were to build the ground up by two feet and then put the six foot fence above it, does that now become an eight foot fence that would not be allowed?
No, no, it does not. It's measured from the grade where the fence is sitting. But I would just caution anyone against doing that, particularly along property lines, because typically there are, there may be a drainage swell or easement there and that's something, uh, you know, if it's designed where water goes there, you, you don't wanna build that up and change any existing drainage patterns. There may not be one there, but it's, it's always an issue.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Sarah, this is Rob real quick. Where are you, under condition number two, applicant is required to replace a portion of the existing chain link fence. Uh, whose fence?
So, this is actually something, so items number two and three are unchanged from the initial approval in February. So, this would be the neighbor on the opposite side of the property, um, who was not in question today.
Okay, so that, that, this would be the north side, not the south side?
Yeah, so it's the northern property line.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify, then item number four would be taken off the approval then, Paul, because we're not changing the deadline date?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I guess Rob had a good question. Whose fence is that on the north side? Is that, is that Frank's fence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the variance as presented, uh, with the three, uh, conditions, items one through three as presented this evening?
Yeah, Andy for the first.
Thank you, Andy. Do I have a second?
Dusty with the second.
Thank you, Tom, for the second. Um, please call the roll.
Approval with conditions, Mr. Coulter?
Uh, based on the, uh, application, I believe it provides, uh, adequate privacy, uh, and accommodates, uh, sequences needs for their, uh, family and for their animals for privacy. I vote yes.
Mr. Ices?
Uh, yes.
Dragon Burger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Kurnick?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Alright, without your variance has been approved. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm all set to go ahead and put that up there at the four foot, seven foot, and it's good, correct?
I believe John still has to stamp your approval, but yes, uh, other than that you have paid, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, uh, just before we go into this, this next two items are going to be heard jointly by the planning commission. I think most of them are here in attendance and I'm not sure, we, we haven't done this in a long time. Is this something where we wanna convene the planning commission meeting at this time, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, i- if we're all here and, and the board of zoning appeals is okay with taking all those matters up together, I'm comfortable with doing that.
Okay. I, I think everyone is here. Hopefully they're on the call.
So I will then call to order this, uh, meeting of the planning commission. Can we do a roll call?
Mayor Harden?
Mayor Harden, present.
Mr. Luke?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Shuji?
Here.
And Mr. Knight?
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. I will forego the rest of our agenda and go straight to, uh, the, the request for Prime Transportation Repair Center. Paul, I will let you, uh, take over chairmanship at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Dirks, would you please, uh, read the next item on our agenda?
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is by Thomas Dunn of Dunn's and Tittas. On behalf of Prime Transportation Repair Center, um, for the property of one two zero five zero Champion Way in Sharonville, Ohio, in the General Industry District. Tom Dunn, on behalf of Prime Transportation Repair Center, is requesting a variance from the Sharonville zoning ordinance one one three seven point oh four B two to allow front yard parking in the General Industry District. The site plan and new use will be reviewed by planning commission. I can switch to the other slides so that planning commission can do their voting as well. Um, and they are proposing to build a ten thousand square foot building with a three enclosed repair base. Um, so the existing conditions for the property is that it is next to the railroad. It's a corner lot, so there are two front yards. It's also a triangle shaped lot. There is a hundred foot utility easement that runs through the property and it has remained undeveloped since two thousand four when the lot was platted on Champion Way. So the proposal meets all other setback requirements, avoiding Duke Energy easements and, um, other building setback requirements. Um, however, there is front yard parking on the property, which is prohibited by section one one three seven point oh four B two of the zoning code. The applicant has submitted a conceptual landscape plan, which provide a visual screening to the parking lot area, um, and trucks on site. We're here to view what the property looks like from, on Google Earth. Um, as you can see, it has remained undeveloped and there is a utility, um, transformer right here. Um, the applicant has submitted the site plan shown here. Um, it is difficult to see the side yard setback, but the, um, applicant has assured me that they will meet the minimum side yard setback for the building. And here is the conceptual landscape plan, um, with various trees. And here is the conceptual landscape plan, um, with various trees, um, illustrated to provide screening from both the side yard property and also, um, the two front streets, um, um, Champion Way and East Prestonville Road. Here are the renderings of what the site would look like from the north, south, west, and east. Um, we've notified all property owners within a hundred feet, and we've received no calls or emails. So if the board is considering their request, um, to allow a variance for front yard parking in the general industry district, staff recommends the following conditions. Um, item number one, the applicant's conceptual landscape plan does not specifically say what type of plants are going to plant, or how tall the plant will be. Um, so in speaking with the applicant, we, um, asked them if they were okay with applying this condition of a minimum of at least a hundred plants of various species to create height and visual interest, and at least fifty trees that are at least six feet in height. Um, they will work out the details with us more specifically when they're ready to develop, but just a general standard of a hundred plants and fifty trees. And then also, um, the second condition would be that all improvements and work indicated on the construction drawing and documents be approved as part of this front yard parking variance and be review, or be reviewed and installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved parking area. So Paul, I'm not sure if you'd like the board to discuss this first, or if you wanna, you need to read the, um, planning commissions, but basically planning commission is just reviewing to make sure they're okay with the use, um, the landscaping and.
Would the, uh, I was gonna just ask, would, would the planning commission need our approval prior to your discussion?
Wow, yes, I think so, because, uh, the, the whole concept, or the whole plan is based on that parking in front of the building. So I think the variance should be acted on first.
Okay.
Just for, you know, just to stay, stick with procedure.
Okay, I'll switch back.
All right, so, um, Board of Appeals, any, uh, questions, comments, discussion on the application as presented for the variance for front yard parking? Uh, I think, uh, that the site is evergreen now. It's, it's a tough triangle site, uh, and if they're willing to put in the landscaping and, and improve the property as they've identified in their renderings, I think it would be a, a welcome addition to Sharonville. And I think that the, um, uh, the lot itself could be softened by the landscaping, uh, in working with, um, Community Development Department.
And if I could, Paul, I would like to add one more thing. Uh, it, it is, I think it's actually kind of unusual that we do not, I mean, we allow parking at all in front of the building and all the commercial and all the other districts in town, but for, for some reason, we do not permit parking in the front of an industrial property. But that's something we'll probably address with the upcoming zoning code update, you know, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Very good point. Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none or hearing none, are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience regarding this variance request? Seeing none, is there a motion on this variance as presented this evening? With the conditions, uh, that staff is recommending regarding number one landscaping details will include the minimum of a hundred plants of various species and height for visual interest, uh, and B of item one, fifty trees planted at least six feet in height to provide visual screening. And item number two, that all improvements and work indicated on the construction drawings or documents proved as a part of this front yard parking review will be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved parking area.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Also, maybe, um, mute Dusty's phone.
Thank you, Matt, for the first. Do you have a second?
I have, I'll second.
Thank you for the second, Mr. Kornick. Uh, Mr. Creach, would you please call the roll?
Motion to approve with conditions, Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. Eisen?
Yes.
Mr. Dragon Burger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Kornick?
Yes.
And Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you don't mind, Paul, we'll take a, hopefully we won't hold zoning board up too long, but we'll take over the planning commission portion of it and hopefully let, uh, I, I don't, is, Mr. Dunn, are you present?
Hey, Tom, you're muted.
Oh, I see him. Let me unmute. Let me try to unmute everyone, and then, oh, there he is.
All right, all right, so he is here. Okay. Um, Sarah, did you have anything else you wanted to add for the planning commission?
Um, so for planning commission, um, staff recommended the following conditions, and that the proposed truck repair establishment shall comply with section one-one-three-seven-point-oh-two-A-two, that all services occur within an enclosed building. The proposal indicates there will be three, um, three repair base, so everything looks like it should be indoor, but just to restate that the zoning code only allows work inside of an enclosed building. Um, the second one, um, which we had already stated for, um, the zoning appeals, is that a minimum of a hundred trees of various species and heights for visual interest be included in the plan, in addition to fifty, um, planted trees of at least six feet in height for visual screening or interest. Planning commission can decide if they are satisfied with those minimum qualifications, but as mentioned before, we've already spoken with Tom, who's okay with those conditions. And item number three is that final site plan approval is subject to city engineer approval. Um, the planning commission approval is not a building permit. The applicant will still be required, um, to file the necessary permitting to remain in compliance. And also that all improvements and work indicated on the construction drawing and documents be approved as part of the new site, new use and site plan um, and are reviewed and to be installed in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with this approval.
Uh, I will start the discussion by, by saying, I think this is probably one of the nicest looking, uh, truck repair buildings I've probably seen in a long time. Um, so I, I, just from the elevations and, and what's been presented, uh, I think nice job, from, from my opinion. Um, planning commission, any, uh, questions from planning commission members or comments? Mr. Lucas?
Just wanna make sure, um, is there any portion of the parking lot that's not gonna be paved?
No, it, it will all be paved. Uh, I might add, a, a very difficult site, as, uh, Sarah had mentioned earlier. Uh, it's a very skinny triangle, and approximately two-thirds of the site is, uh, not buildable because it's part of the easements for the, uh, Duke Energy. So we have a very tiny bit of space left, and I think we've tried to make the most of it. And, uh, with, with, uh, screening from the street and from the neighbors, I think we'll have a site that, uh, you really won't even see the, uh, the building, uh, even though we've tried to make the building as attractive as possible.
Other questions, comments from planning commission?
I think, I think it's got a lot of, in my opinion, uh, you know, quite a lot of sort of screening trees from the aerial there, so I mean, I think that's nice how well it's gonna be sort of hidden.
If there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the application with the conditions as stated in the staff summary. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Knight, second by Mr. Schuie.
I'll second the motion.
I'll win first and second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Motion to approve with conditions, Mayor Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Schuie?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Look forward to having you. Paul, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Sarah, would you read our last case for the Board of Appeals?
Don Creach will actually be presenting the final case on the agenda.
Mr. Creach?
All right. Give me a second here. So this is a variance request submitted by, uh, Mr. Greg Sutter at thirty-five-twenty Maple Avenue. And a couple of, I'm here, I just wanted to go. Sorry about that. So, uh, Mr. Sutter is asking for a variance to, uh, a two-foot height variance to erect an eight-foot tall privacy fence. And just before I go any further, this property, it's a residential, it's an existing single-family home, residential property in an area that's currently owned generally. Uh, as far back as we can tell, it was built probably in the thirties or forties, but property is, is currently his own business. It's in an area that's, there are some residences abutting it at the end of Maple Lane or Maple Avenue. But to the rear is, uh, Park Forty-two Office Park, actually the detention basin for Park Forty-two Office Park. Uh, there's some, uh, small businesses on Lebanon Road in front of it, and then there, uh, um, coming back toward the city building down, uh, Lebanon Road is a, uh, RV storage facility. So it's kind of in a mixed-use area in a, in a business zone, but it is a residential use. Uh, so he's asking for two variances, uh, for a two-foot height variance to erect an eight-foot tall privacy fence. And he's asking for a variance to have back-to-back fences, so kind of what we just talked about. A fence that's less than two feet, six inches away from an existing fence, and you'll see that ju- in just a moment. Um, just some other information there, I kind of went over that, and, and the fence that he will actually abut is actually, uh, Sora's towing. Go ahead, Sarah. Uh, one thing I would point out, though, is, uh, Mr. Sutter did not submit a site plan for, uh, this particular property, for the proposed fence. So this property goes back, there's a little bit of history here, so, uh, Mr. Sutter, directed the fence a large portion of it without a permit, as we were notified that a fence went up. I think you could actually see it, uh, from the street because it was winter time. We reached out, Mr. Sutter, to get a permit, and there was, uh, some difficulties with that. We learned later that he had, uh, actually had a health issue and was in, in the hospital, and that his fence contractor continued on with the work. That's what we were told uh, when this came to the planning commission last year. So it was cited to, uh, mayor's court during that time. That case was continued until, uh, pending BZA and planning commission approval that we're having now. If, back in March, the, um, that was just before, uh, we went virtual, we did not have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to review Mr. Sutter's request for the height because at that meeting, we did not have a quorum, so that meeting was canceled. But we did have the planning commission meeting, and that was a meeting that I presided over, and the mayor was unavailable. And, uh, it was well attended by, uh, many of the neighbors. Uh, planning commission denied the conditional use request at that meeting for him to keep the privacy fence. Uh, and so in the meantime, uh, there, there was one neighbor in particular that had an issue with, uh, what Mr. Sutter had done. Uh, he had that, his fence contractor apparently had mistakenly removed the neighbor's fence, and they came to the planning commission meeting and, uh, brought that up, and, uh, so the planning commission denied the request. In the interim period after that, Mr. Sutter did replace the, the fence that was removed, and it's my understanding, at least now from the neighbors where the fence was removed, that they no longer have a problem with the fence, and they at least don't object to what is being proposed. But they do have, uh, they did make us aware that there are some dead trees, apparently, between their new fence that Mr. Sutter just installed and where Mr. Sutter wants to place his fence. So obviously, if the board would consider approving this, uh, we think that, you know, should be addressed possibly in the conditions that those trees be removed or be replaced. Let's go on a little further here in the, um, case background. Basically, it, it went to mayor's court, and it's basically continued until, uh, pending tonight's outcome. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, Greg Sutter, thirty-five-twenty Maple Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not quite finished.
Okay, sorry, you said go ahead.
I said, go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, you said sir. Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, this is the property. Go ahead, Sarah. All right, so this is the location of where the fences abut one another. Then, right there, I took that photograph. That's actually standing on top of the embankment of the detention pond behind Park Forty-two. Flip back one more, Sarah. Yeah, so you can see the fence there within, uh, that's Sora's impound lot where they have vehicles, Mr. Sutter's fence, privacy fence, eight feet. They have a six-foot tall, uh, chain link fence with privacy slats, and there's barbed wire on top. So the fences do abut one another there. Go ahead. And these are views of Mr. Sutter's fence from within the parking lot of Park Forty-two, looking toward the back of his property. And you can see there's the detention pond there. There's the embankment there behind it. That's where I was standing, looking into the wooded area where Sora's is. Go ahead. This is the property, uh, highlighted. Again, we notified all the abutting property owners. We did obviously get some comments back that were curious what's going on because this, you know, has gone back, uh, some time. He did get the, uh, Mr. Sutter did get the signature of Sora's, uh, for his conditional use permit to, uh, put up the fence as well. Go ahead. Yeah, so these are some of the photographs that was, uh, given to us, but, and that's the new fence there, and you see some of the evergreen, uh, herbivorous trees, and you can see a couple of them there have died in the meantime. So we would, we think the board should at least address that if they are inclined to approve this. And the portion of the fence here, it'll be eight feet in height, but it will be setback, um, and, um, so that's why he's asking for a variance for it. I think that's, oh, do we have anything else here, Sarah? So if the board would approve this, um, you know, you're looking at height and the setback between the fences. Again, just to remind you, the planning commission denied that initial conditional use permit request. They've since amended it. They made some changes now. Uh, so that's why they're coming back to the, the Board of Zoning Appeals, which didn't meet back in, in March, and now, uh, de- depending on the outcome of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then would go to planning commission right after this. Again, the fence there on that abutting property that was removed has now been replaced, and it's our understanding they're happy with the exception of addressing those trees. Again, Sora's has their six-foot fence, so the fence is abut. That's one reason why they need the, uh, the variance. And again, I did wanna point out that, uh, there really wasn't a, a full-blown site plan submitted for the property that showed the areas that would be fenced in for the fence permit. And again, just to remind everyone and Mr. Sutter that if this is approved, you will need a building permit for that eight-foot fence.
Hey, John, before, um, the applicant, uh, makes his case, this variance is only for the privacy fence that abuts Sora's property. It is not to permit a reerection of the fence that was taken down, correct?
Correct. Um, that's actually why the images were submitted from the next-door neighbor, um, for one-one-four-two-three Lebanon Road. Um, when the notices went out, um, they took these pictures and submitted it for the board to review, um, just because the posts were extremely high. It indicates that it will be colored in six feet in height, um, and they were afraid of the property maintenance and the toxic property. Um, I have since spoken, not spoken, I email corresponded with the lawyer, um, of the property owner of one-one-four-two-three Lebanon Road. They are not going to be in attendance. I don't believe anyone is in attendance on behalf of this property, um, because I told them it only affected Soros in US or in Park Forty-two, but they still wanted to submit this image just to, um, make sure that everything is actually, as, um, Mr. Sutter's had. as Mr. Sutter's had applied for, he is going to install a six-foot non-privacy fence with twenty percent airflow and visibility, and maintain that landscaping in between the property. So it will be fully in compliance with zoning at this property line. But the new law firm would like, requested that we kept this as part of the record, so the board and Planning Commission can see what he has done since the meeting, and with the removal of the fence.
And is there a valid fence permit that's already been issued?
Yes, there is a valid fence permit. The property owner of one-one-four-two-three Lebanon Road had some issues with the survey. They were afraid Mr. Sutter's wasn't approaching, so they had a professional survey completed. They found out that there was a slight encroachment. But when Mr. Sutter has reinstalled the fence, the chain-link fence, the permit technically belongs to one-one-four-two-three. But I believe Mr. Sutter's resolved that issue with them. So he installed the fence exactly on the property line. So the property line is the chain-link fence. And the wood fence that is half erect, not fully erect, is the fence that has a valid permit, provided that, I believe it's one and a quarter inch separation between the boards to allow the twenty percent airflow and visibility. It will be double-sided, it will be finished, and it will be at the minimum standard of a fence in this area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sutter, do you have any further comments on your application?
Sure. Okay, we'll start off with the fence that's already been approved, the six-foot fence. The tree, a couple of dead trees, yes, but that's all been in the last thirty days. Actually, there's a sprinkler system that was put in by all those trees, because there's a fence going to be in front of that. So that is done by TJ Landscaping. I talked to him two days ago, probably be thirty, sixty days. But once the fall season gets here, he said it's crazy to plant them again right now because they're going to die again. The sprinkler system isn't there, it's set that way. So once that's happened, he'll replace those, of course, because everything in my yard looks like a park. So it's done correctly. The larger pole, which I told Tom yesterday, and I think I've mentioned to Sarah too, putting cedar, cedar back up, and I'm trying to get the cedar six-foot fence pieces to go with it. The ten-foot post were the same price. I'll cut those off when I put the six-foot fence up, that's not a problem. But there's no sense putting the six-foot fence up until I get the trees lined up and have everything set that way. And I believe the permit is good for six months anyway at this point. So the poster set, they're getting hard, it doesn't make any difference. The six-foot fence will go up, it will look the same way on both sides. So that's been approved, gave that information to Sarah, you should have copied all that anyway. So that, that part should be taken care of. The eight-foot fence, most of it on Tom Soro's property. The eight-foot fence, his fence with the barbed wire is anywhere from seven and a half feet to eleven foot high. If you go back by my, back by my storage shed, his fence is two or three feet over top of that. So that's worth that. Tom could not be any happier with it. He said that at the meeting months ago when he was there. And also, I believe Tom has already submitted an application for the continued eight-foot fence on his property, or him and his brother will be in the next couple of days. I, when I talked to them Monday, I thought they said different, they kind of dropped it all. The fence on the back is because of the, I mean, what you can see if you have that pond or a property, when you look at my property with the, with that, with the lake there. Okay, the whole idea is between kids and grandkids and family and friends, that's too close from the walk over there, because a lot of that's not taken care of, as you saw the picture. But if you look at the parking lot right behind my property, this is what, this is their property, this is the property line, look at my fence. So, you know, this stuff's grown up almost in the fence line already. And actually, if you look at your picture, the top picture, if they would have done the retention pond the way that it was supposed to be, if it was two and a half feet higher at my end of the property, you wouldn't even see the fence. So the retention pond went down, didn't meet the specs to go with. And so, and also, if you go back to when this retention pond was put in, there's supposed to have been trees all the way across the top. So, you know, I haven't pushed any of that issue, but that's something else along the same line. But the fence being right next to each other, it, the only parts next to somebody is Tom Soro, and he could not be any happier with it. He's tickled to death with it. And if you see the chain-link fence, it comes near the top, actually, it goes over top of the fence on some areas.
And who's responsible for, for maintaining that small space between Sora's chain-link fence and your fence?
I, I talked to Tom about it, I've already sprayed weed killer on there once. And he said he has no problem at all, and he can verify that, he'd be glad to. You know, I had to go on his property to do that, and he has no problem with that.
Okay.
And then that's, that's before, if you, back at the very beginning of the meeting, way back, I don't know, two or three months ago, they asked to have that property stained. Well, it was put up that day, so it takes a couple of weeks to get stained. It's been stained with two coats of paint, two coats of varnies, I'm sorry, stained from Hartman Painting Company. They did a first-class quality job of it, which you can tell with the other pictures. And that's the back one, if you can look and see how it drops on, on an angle there too. Other than that, I mean, everything down back on that road, I mean, we even brought sewers back there. I mean, we haven't spent money on this, the city hasn't spent money. We spent a hundred grand, eighty, hundred grand to put sewers back on our own road. So, I mean, I try to do everything either right or not at all. So as you can tell, and Tom may verify when he walked out, looked at it, looked at it yesterday.
Yeah. Mr. Sutter, I, yeah, thanks for your, you know, your input there. So I, I guess the question I have, it kind of keeps coming back to this two-foot-six-inch, you know, separation between fences. How, how do you propose maintaining this fence? I mean, you stained it, I mean, how do you restain it ten, five years, seven years from now?
Well, it's cedar, so there's not going to be a problem with, with either side of the wood for at least twenty years. It's been stained on the far side, on Tom's side, before we put it up. So that was stained, and Hartman Painting, you know, cedar's not going to be a problem for twenty years down the road. If there's a problem down the road, I can take the post, I can cut one post out and, and put in sections as they need be.
So, okay, so I guess the same question is, in twenty years, you have to restain it. How do you go about doing that with that chain-link fence right there?
Well, you pull, if you look, you're looking at the, you're looking at the, the fence on the backside right now. So if you cut between two posts on both sides, I can add, I can pull one piece of, I can pull out one, one eight-foot section at a time and replace the wood if necessary. The same thing, so like if some groundhog decides to eat some wood underneath there, I'm either going to have to try to fix it from one side or pull a piece out and, and, and add another piece in there, like adding another rafter on a house. I would add another piece across member of two-by-four across that, across the, also cedar wood, the whole thing's cedar wood. So there's nothing, it's not pressure treated, we're going to have a problem with it in five or six years. I mean, it's like the rest of my house, my whole house is cedar house, and that's, that's been now for twenty-eight years. I haven't had a problem with it, as long as you maintain it.
All right, as long as you're aware of it.
Yeah.
So I, I noticed that in the staff summary, there's quite a history of code issues with respect to being cited at the Mayor's Court. Have all those issues been resolved prior to tonight's meeting?
It always falls to that one fence, which I took the fence down. And actually, Tom Soro is going to put that fence on the other side once, once you approve his permit. I don't know if he submitted yet to Sarah or not.
I have not, I do not remember, Gina might know.
It'll be the last few days.
I do not remember. Nothing yet.
Yeah. And as far as Mayor's Court, court is not going to make a decision until the board and Planning Commission makes a decision. Although I was informed that there was a meeting today, which Mr. Sutter missed for Mayor's Court.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I was informed that there was a meeting today that Donna had with you at four o'clock that you missed.
Actually, I verified that with you, Sarah, that there was no meeting. That's why I had a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Because I was available. Actually, I, I called, I text and called Sarah to make sure I wasn't at a four, four, four-thirty meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's something separate with Donna. But yeah, I, I told him that our meeting started at six o'clock and seven-thirty, and that.
I was available, yes.
But it was unrelated to our meeting.
But there, there wasn't anything before Mayor's Court today?
There, there was an appointment, but there was a miscommunication. And there was, yeah. So it, nothing has been resolved with Mayor's Court, it still will have to go back to Mayor's Court.
But what, do we have to, do we, yes, Mr. Creach?
Can I add something? So, just so the Board of Zoning Appeals knows, with Mayor's Court. So our office, you know, we do property maintenance, code enforcement, zoning enforcement. So we send letters out to people that violate those various codes. Sometimes property owners immediately comply, sometimes they drag their feet, sometimes you have to do a final notice. The absolute last resort is to take someone to the Sharonville Mayor's Court. And it's not meant necessarily, it's not meant to be punitive, it's to achieve compliance. That's all we're looking for. So typically, whenever someone goes to the Mayor's Court, the magistrate is looking to make sure that, you know, the city's happy from the standpoint of, has this person that has been cited to court, have they done the improvements? Have they cleaned up their property? Have they gotten a permit? You know, whatever it is that we've cited them to court for. That's really what they're looking for, to make sure that the city's happy, everything's been addressed. And typically, if that, you know, if we go and we say, yes, the applicant went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, they got their conditional approval or whatnot, the magistrate usually at that point simply dismisses the case. Sometimes he may charge court cost or a small penalty or fine, it just depends. But, you know, that's completely at his discretion. So that's, that's the whole Mayor's Court process. But.
So, so from.
Case, that, that case is still pending, the outcome of Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission.
Okay, so by the applicant not showing up at Mayor's Court tonight because of a miscommunication, that does not affect our ability to hear this variance and render a decision?
No.
That is an issue between Mr. Sutter and the magistrate.
Yeah. So it, it doesn't affect the board's decision to make an opinion. I, from what I've gathered, the, the Ma, the Mayor's Court would like a decision one way or the other to help them with their case. But as far as I know, once it goes into Mayor's Court, there's nothing our department can do to halt it from continuing to Mayor's Court. It has to close eventually. But once it goes to Mayor's Court, it's court that deals with it. So it's out of our control on how the response is handled.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Has the unfinished side of the fence been switched around?
No, that's the next item on the Planning Commission agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're only hearing the height and the separation, the setback. Any other questions or comments?
I didn't know, didn't know I had to be there. I thought I was all taken care of, that's why I verified it, I should have verified with everybody, but. Yes, and actually, why I didn't get to it earlier the last time, apparently a letter was sent out to me. I'm sorry, but I was actually in Minnesota at Mayo. I had my heart taken out, some pieces cut off my heart, so that was my priority at that point. But.
Understand, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board regarding this case as presented? Question or comments from the audience? Seeing or hearing none, do I have a motion on this variance as presented this evening along with the five conditions that were identified by staff? Yes, sir.
I saw a hand go up.
I believe there might be members of the public present.
I am trying to communicate, it's Steve Burgess. I don't understand why.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, this is Steve Burgess, I live at thirty-five seventeen Maple Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just wanted to give my two cents. I was planning to be at Mayor's Court today, I had been planning for a month, and I heard it was canceled. So I know that I would have been there in support of Mr. Sutter. Again, I've, I've lived longer than anybody else, I've lived at my home for forty years. And the miraculous transformation that Greg has done to his property is, is wonderful. He has taken a condemned eyesore and made it into a showplace. And he has always done everything with excellence. And the fact that a couple of trees, the bushes died, it's, I've, I've planted a lot of trees, and I've had many of mine die because it's been a tough season. He has always maintained beautifully the landscaping, the house, the buildings, the whatever it is, it's done with class. And anybody who looks at it, I think, would say that it looks like a resort, you know, house almost, or, or type of property. Yeah. I know there've been some issues and that they've come, but Greg has addressed those, I feel like. He has tried to work with the neighbors, and, and that's not been, been easy. But he has went out of his way to comply and to make his property a beautiful place, increases the value of everybody surrounding it as far as their property values. So when Greg says he's going to do something, it's done extremely well every time. So that is my support of his request.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Anybody else in the audience wishes to speak?
Yes, please. My name is James Keller, I'm General Counsel for Monty Properties in Park Forty-two, accompanied by Ann Lively, the property manager, who was at the last meeting. In regard to the eight-foot privacy fence, I just wanted to let you know, we don't have any problem with that variance to be eight feet. I have one question concerning the two-foot-six, two-foot-six-inch setback. Because there was no property, or because there was no building permit to begin with, I'm not sure whether the fence was built on the property line or behind, or if that in any way affects the, the, the property line of Monty Properties. Assuming that it only affected Soros, which I'm kind of confused on, we would have no objection to the setback, provided that, that it's not against the Monty Properties property line. And then I'll speak more when we get to the other, the, the reverse side of the fence.
To address your concern with it potentially only affecting Soros property, it's because the City of Sharonville zoning code allows for back-to-back fences. Not back-to-back fences, I apologize, I did not mean to say that. They allow for fences on the property line. But you cannot have back-to-back fences. The reason they do not allow back-to-back fences is because of property maintenance concerns. So they have the two to six feet separation. Sounds like Mr. Sutter's has worked out with Soros property about the property maintenance in between the property. So in Johnson, it only affects Soros property, it's because the potential concerns of property maintenance would only affect Soros because the property could still be maintained on your side of the property, because there is no, like, tightness for property minions to go in between, because they are permitted to have it on the property line. However, your first concern related to the survey and the site plan, there was no site plan. A site plan will be required by the City of Sharonville. We do not require a survey. However, the other property owner had obtained a survey and changed the property line slightly when the fence was reinstalled. So that could be something the board would talk about, whether they needed a surveyed, official survey or just a casual survey, like.
A site plan ordered, but there's, the survey has been so busy, I haven't been able to get that. If you notice the one picture they got on the screen right there, that yellow flag is my property line. So those, those pine trees are on my property. So I purposely kept the fence, I didn't try to get near the fence line because I didn't want to make the fence straight. But also, right behind that pine tree is a gate, a four-foot gate. So I can get outside of the gate to make sure things are picked up from that pine tree, and any, anything from my yard is taken care of also. But I'll be glad when I get, when I get the site survey, of course, I'll forward it.
Mr. Keller, is that a dress your issues at this point?
It, it does, we'll wait and see the, the site plan, make sure that everything's proper on the, on the property line. But other than that, I don't have any objection.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience this evening? Any further discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion on this variance as presented this evening along with the two conditions that staff has identified, that the site plan of the full property indicating the fenced area is required prior to the issuance of a permit? Number two, that a building permit is required for an eight-foot fence. And I would like to add number three, as part of the discussion, that the dead or dying trees are either replaced or removed at that chain-link fence line as indicated by Community Development Department.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Eichenberger, thank you for the first, I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perenick, for the second. Mr. Creach, would you please call the roll?
Motion to approve with the two original conditions and the addition of the third condition, Mr. Coulter.
Seeing that there was no objection by the affected property owners and that it is a quality and durable cedar fence that provides adequate screening from a junkyard, I vote yeah. and that it is a quality and durable cedar fence that provides adequate screening from a junkyard, I vote yes.
Mr. Eisen?
I agree, I vote yes.
Dragon Burger?
Yes.
Mr. Sasser?
Yes.
Perenick?
Yes.
Mr. Golding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, your variance in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals has been approved. I guess we need to adjourn our meeting and then turn it over to Planning Commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
I would, that makes most sense. I would, obviously, Mr. Sutter, don't go away.
Okay. I have one quick order of business that I passed over. I just need a motion to approve our minutes from our last meeting last month.
I approve.
Thank you, Mr. Perenick. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sasser. We are adjourned, thank you.
We will return back to Planning Commission. At this time, are there, well, Sarah, let, go ahead and update us with regard to the new business involving 3520 Maple Avenue as it relates to Planning Commission? Or John, whichever one of you's-
John, if you still want to present this, you can.
So as far as the conditional, so, yes, Mr. Sutter is asking for a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission to have the exterior, or the finished side of the fence rather, facing the exterior of the property. That's really all he's asking for. He did, again, I mentioned this earlier, he did receive a signature from Soros. But as with our conditional use permit, you are required to get every abutting property's owner's signature. If you don't, then you come to the Planning Commission, we notify them of tonight's meeting. So that's why Mr. Sutter is here tonight.
Mr. Sutter, we will obviously take note of all members of Planning Commission who are at the zoning board meeting with you, so we can take note of, of the comments you made with regard to the portion of the fence bordering Park 42 from that meeting. Are there any additional comments you have for us at this time?
The only thing, the last time they talked about was just to make sure I had it stained. And actually, I had, that was done, like I said earlier, it was done by Hartman Painting. They put two coats of quality paint, quality stain on there. And he, he told me that's good for at least 10 years. So as far as that part of it, that will always be stained as, as, as the front will be. The parts, the faces, that's underneath the chain link fence on Soros, that might not get stained every, it won't get stained every five or six years because you won't be able to get to it. But it will be maintained, that's for sure.
Okay, Mr. Keller, I think you'd like to address Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yes, it, it is. I'm, I'm not sure why it was, it was built backwards, so to speak. We were not contacted about that and the, the general requirement, my understanding is that the finished side faces outwardly. We see no reason why that wouldn't be required in this case. So we object to the, the, the exception that he would like to the variance, we object to the variance.
The state, and I apologize because I was not available for the March meeting when this was up. Can, was there a discussion at that point about the staining of the fence? Can anybody recall or share with me what prompted that choice?
Correct. It was, it was mentioned that a, it needed to get a stain, but it was, was, it wasn't, it had not been set with the, with the painting company at that point. This all came up that quick.
And we, I did raise at that meeting in March that we did not want the unfinished side facing us. That was the reason I attended the meeting.
Okay, questions, comments from the commission? Obviously, the rest of you were here, I believe, at that meeting.
So, looking at the staff recommendations for consideration, staff recommends that a site plan be required to show the full extent of the fenced-in area. Number two, that the applicant finishes the fence facing Park 42. The fence can be decided if Mr. Sutter chooses to keep the finished side facing his property. And that all improvements of work indicated in the construction drawings and documents are approved as part of the conditional use permit and reviewed and be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approval. So item number two would address the concerns of Mr. Keller of having the finished panels facing his property. This is similar to what he's doing, or he had been approved for the neighbor of 11, the neighbor to the 11423 Lebanon Road. He is having a double-sided non-privacy fence facing their property. It sounds like Mr. Keller and Ann Lively are not opposed to the actual privacy fence itself. It's more or less the finished direction of the fence, of having double paneling or exposed paneling.
That is, that is correct. We, we have no objection with the recommendation.
Sarah, can you go back to the picture of the fence, the unfinished side? Right there. So, Ms., Mr. Keller, are you talking about just not wanting to see the framework there?
Right, correct.
Okay, got you.
John, if I can remember right, maybe Mr. Keller or Mrs. Keller can correct me if I'm wrong. But I do remember that it was addressed of the unfinished side facing the neighbors. And I thought that Mr. Sutter agreed to have wood slots put up on the unfinished side facing the residents around him.
That has been addressed for the property of 111, 11423. So the neighbor closest to Lebanon Road, he is having a double-sided fence. He is not having a double-sided fence facing Soros and Park 42. John pointed out the reasoning, most likely being that there is a retention bond and a large separation between the parking lot for Park 42 and Mr. Sutter's property. However, the zoning code and the conditional use permit for a privacy fence does require that it is finished facing the neighbor in that it is six feet in height. So because he's deviating from the request and there is a neighbor opposed, is why we are-
Okay, thank you.
I, this is Bill. I, I seem to remember the same conversation. And I also kind of remember from the first time that I was a little taken back by the fact that they just went ahead and did everything without consulting anybody or doing any permitting or thing. And I thought it was rather arrogant and disrespectful to the neighbors, not to mention the scene and the way that this whole project was begun and, and completed. And I just have a problem with capitulating, I guess, a little bit because it, it's just, it, it just sets a bad precedent, that's all.
I think that, this is Sam, I mean, regardless of how it was done or not, we, we would usually not grant, you know, the, the conditional request if the neighbor it's facing is specifically saying they don't want that. That would be very unusual, at least in my experience over four or five years of doing this, that we would say, it doesn't matter, it's gonna be that way anyway. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't think that's our usual approach for it. It pretty much requires that neighbor's buy-in.
I'd like to chime in if I could. I, I agree with Bill Martin. I think we both agreed the previous meeting. It seemed like this fence went in and just kind of totally disregarded all regulations about the city zoning and code enforcement and everything else. And we've always maintained that that fence has, the finished side has to face out.
Can you clarify for me, so I'm looking at the area map of the property and so it's of, of Mr. Sutter's property, and it's kind of like a, a slope on the left side and then it's flat at the top that faces Park 42. Is the entire slanted side to the right Soros property? Or is there Park 42 property before you get to Soros' property on, on that next little slanted area? Does, if that's making sense?
So this is Soros' property and this is Park 42.
Can you, do you have a picture, do you have the, um, the, the plot map, I guess it is, Sarah? Aegis map?
I do not have a Cages map up here.
Go to the notification map, Sarah.
That's what I'm, yeah.
So, yeah.
Is that, that's Park 42, is the, is, if you go trace the property for me? So just tell me who's bordering which portions.
This is, this is the city easement. So this is, well, actually, I think Mr. Sutter's purchased that. But anyway, so this is the property owners who complained about the dying trees. This is Soros' property right here.
Okay.
Park 42's property. So Park 42's property, I'm not entirely sure who this corner is. It looks like there are parked cars in here, which would make me think it's Soros'. I cannot zoom in closer to tell for sure.
Yeah, that's really that diamond, that, that triangular prop piece was what I was curious about. Do we believe that's, we believe that's Soros' property?
I believe so. That's where he wants to continue the fence.
Okay.
Wants to continue that, along that straight, all the way back to that next building because he had somebody try to break in, so he was, he was talking about putting that for the next 150 feet.
Mr. Keller, do you believe that's, is that your understanding as well?
Based upon this drawing or the, this photograph, it looks like there's some parking or something back there for Soros. So I, I, I have no reason to disbelieve the property lines that are depicted on here. But usually, I, you know, I, I'm not looking at an official plat map, but-
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at, that is Soros' property. I'm looking at it right now.
Awesome, thank you. So, so what we would be talking, so Soros has basically said they're fine with the unfinished portion facing their property. What we would be dealing with as far as Park 42 is basically just the top portion of that where we have objection, is that my understanding from all of the residents that, that have been spoken to at this point?
It's correct on behalf of Park 42 and, and Monty Properties that owns that land.
John and Sarah, is that my understanding, is that all those other property ends are satisfied with where they currently are?
That's correct.
So if, if we, we could potentially require that that, to grant this, be willing to grant the unfinished side with regard to Soros' property and other abutting property owners by the agreement that exists and require that it become double-sided in the portion of fence that faces and abuts Park 42. And, and I will echo both Mr. Knight and Mr. Martin's comments. You know, I know, Mr. Sutter, I think you've done a great job in upkeeping that property. I think it looks great. I think it looks very nice, but we do have zoning codes. We do have rules in place and we do expect individuals to follow them. And as much as I don't, you know, granting Planning Commission after the fact decisions happens on occasion, it might very well happen in this particular instance with the conditions that we're talking about and I probably will get my support to do that. But I, I don't particularly like it. I don't think it's the way we like to operate as a city. But, you know, my job isn't to be dad and, and chastise. It's to make sure that all the property owners are, are fully taken care of and vetted. I don't know if it, you know, in my opinion, that's taken care of if, if there's a double-sided fence on that portion that faces Park 42. And if, if that's not where it's going, then it, then it shouldn't happen. But I, I'm not, don't think I'm going to be granting it to not have a, a finished side facing Park 42. But assuming you are willing to do that, I think you would have my approval. Other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment, it's Bill. I would like to have a provision in there that if some of the other neighbors that aren't represented here tonight or, and if they see that we capitulated on this, on this one thing here, if they get upset about it, I like to have a provision in there that they have an, an opportunity to have the same treatment.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I thought I understood, that's why I was trying to ask of John and Sarah, was that all the other property owners have already, there's, either the issue's already been taken care of, am I correct?
The abutting property, we heard from one of the neighbors, I, I forget the gentleman's name, who spoke earlier, was in support. The other property owners along Lebanon Road, where the fence was removed and he replaced the one there, by understanding they're in a, they're okay with it, provided that the trees are addressed. And Soros, he's already had Soros' signature for the fence to face him, so.
Yeah, but I, I thought that was going to be a double, a double-sided finished fence on their side as well.
Currently looking at now, for 11423 Lebanon Road, I spoke with a lawyer. They were planning on attending today when they thought that he was requesting an unfinished side facing their fence or an eight-foot fence. But once I explained to him that the fence would only be in discussion for facing US 40, or, sorry, I keep saying US 42. For Park 42, Office Park and Soros, they decided not to attend. They just submitted these images for the board and Planning Commission to see as reference to what the current status is for the fence that they have proposed installing. The fence that they have proposed installing will comply with all zoning standards. It will be double-faced, it will have 20% airflow and visibility. It will have the two feet thick in its separation and it will be maintained by Mr. Sutter's in between the property line. Sounds like he's already addressed that he's having landscaping sprinkler system. So it will be resolved and then the board also requires that it would be replaced if it's dead.
So let me, let me just, so I'm super clear about what we're talking about. The only portions, the only property owners that border Mr. Sutter's property that would be looking at an unfinished fence would be Soros because they said they're okay with it.
Correct, yeah.
And that would, that would basically be what I think I would state, and I think that takes care of what you're asking for, Mr. Martin, if I'm not mistaken, is that any property owner that abuts this and looks at this fence has to look at a finished side unless they are in agreement with seeing the unfinished portion.
So I'm happy with that.
Okay.
I, I just had a question on, on that overview map there, that red area that, Sarah. So you mentioned he's, so he has bought that right-of-way. So this, this fence in question, that's the unfinished side is facing outward, is that just along the red part currently? Or does it extend out further into that, into the green area? I mean, how, where exactly that we're talking about?
Well, the parcel map does not include the parcel that he purchased as a right-of-way. So the shaded in red area should extend. I do not know where the end of his property line goes, but it would face here. So just imagine this area, right, Mr. Sutter's can know exactly where the edge is of where his property line ends, if it matters to you.
I'll get, you know, I'll get the site survey. It's, it's on order. He just has, he's been too busy to get to it. This all came up two or three weeks ago when Sarah said I had to have a site survey. So I contacted the land, the surveyor that's working on the other survey information. He hasn't gotten to it yet.
It's only, it's only along that part and it doesn't, doesn't go down.
Well, two property owners.
Yeah, it's, it's only along that northern part and it doesn't affect like that 3617 to the west to be there.
Not till you heard talk, Steve Burgess, correct? It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't affect his property.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
I thought there was somebody on Maple Avenue that came in front of us and that they didn't like the appearance of the unfinished side facing Maple Avenue. And I thought that's where it came in, where-
You only have, so you're three houses. I mean, two plus the electrical contractor, electric contractor way back there. You have two houses on Maple, myself and Steve Burgess, that's the only-
Okay, okay, okay.
The two residents you heard from, well, technically, it's a business in a house-type structure. They have been addressed by this fence right here, which will often will be the code.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Other comments or questions from planning commission? Is there a motion to grant conditional approval with the conditions as stated in the staff summary, which includes the requirement for a site plan for the full extent of the fenced-in area? That the finished side of the fence facing all property owners be abutting properties owners, that abutting property owners have the finished side of the fence facing them, unless that property owner expressly in writing grants permission for the unfinished side to be facing them, as well as the other requirements of the staff summary. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Knight. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Motion to approve with conditions, Mayor Hardman?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sudi?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Thank you all for attending tonight. You're welcome to stick around for our next item of business. But you're also free to leave. Thank you. Our next item of business, well, actually, while we're here, is there a motion to approve the minutes of our agenda here, July 8th, 2020 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
So moved by Mr. Knight, seconded by.
Bill Martin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin. All those, without objection, they will be approved as printed and distributed. We have one item for discussion, and that's an update and discussion on the Sharonville Bike Trail feasibility study.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we could, could we postpone this until the next meeting?
Anybody have any objection to doing that? I don't hear any, so we will table that discussion until our next meeting. Is there, are there any other items to take up before Planning Commission tonight? Is that?
Maybe a plug again about flipping these meetings right here in the evening.
Yeah, we're looking into, we're having discussions with the Board of Zoning Appeals. I thought the joining together to do those last two worked really well, which was how we intended that portion of it to go when we had joint stuff. But we're not, not thinking about it, Bill. So we're just trying to figure out how that works and, and going from there. You know, you know what will happen, though? The first time we do that, we'll end up with a planning commission meeting that's two hours long, and they'll be sitting and waiting for us, but it will serve.
That's called payback, I think.
I, that's right. I was gonna say, it serves them right for the number of times we've had to wait for them. But we are, we are working on that and trying to figure, figure that out. I think we'll probably wait till post-COVID world to make those final determinations. But that's, well, we have not stopped considering that. Any other matters? Seeing none, if there's, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I have to make the motion.
So moved by Mr. Martin, and seconded by myself. All those in favor, good night.
See you.
Good night.